Welcome to the Charles County Board of Education Work Session for October 25th, 2021. I will now call this meeting to order. Will you please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start the meeting with public forum. I'll read the rules for public forum. Speakers should identify themselves. Statements should be brief, to the point, and limited to three minutes or less. Board members should not be expected to respond during the forum to statements made by speakers. Statements that relate to Charles County Board of Education Agenda items or any education-related topic with the following limitations: personnel matters, pending or potential appeals, or the comments regarding the actions or statements of individual staff, or the private lives of any individual are not appropriate topics. Proper language and decorum are required at all times. This evening, we have several speakers. First speaker is Doron Tross. Next speaker is Ralph Patterson.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, board. Being a current educator, not in Charles County, but in Prince George County, I just wanted to know what the Charles County Board is, their plan, as far as maintaining public safety in our public school systems, as far as making sure that our teachers, administrators, students, and building staff are all maintaining the most safe environment conducive for learning.
Our next speaker is Maureen Mears.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Mears. I am a Charles County resident, parent of a CCPS student, and a community volunteer supporting the efforts of Strong Schools Maryland and Decoding Dyslexia. Thank you all, to all the board members, especially Ms. Wilson and Ms. McGraw, for convening this work session. Thank you to Dr. Navarro and her staff for all that you do, especially keeping parents and the public informed on district matters. I am advocating for full implementation of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future in Charles County, and the inclusion of more stakeholders, especially parents and students, in the implementation process. It is great to have ambitious goals and well-developed policy and processes, but these things mean nothing if they are not given adequate resources for implementation. Moreover, the district's actions on the blueprint should not be a separate project, but should be woven into every department, program, building, and classroom. My experience as a parent and community volunteer, however, has shown me that there is room for growth if we are going to be successful in the equitable implementation of the five policy areas. Take college and career-ready pathways as an example. For students to have more dual enrollment and even an associate degree option, high school administrators and counselors will need to embrace scheduling that allows for these opportunities. Currently, some high schools have placed the Capstone class for Project Lead the Way and CASE during sixth period, forcing students to stay until 12:35, limiting their ability to take CSM classes. Also, students attending larger high schools with blocked scheduling have more teachers, greater choice in course sections, 32 credit potential, and scheduling flexibility that is not provided to students with a standard schedule. Students who find it easier to complete their mandatory credits will have greater opportunity for college and career offerings. If we are to embrace policy area number two, we will need to understand that additional support is needed for students, parents, teachers, and administrators. On a related matter on CTE and blueprint goals, I would like to bring your attention to the TAM program and elevating the teaching profession. Did you know that for the past two years, there was a student and parent request to give honors weight to classes in the pathway? They were not successful, and their arguments fell on deaf ears. Currently, several TAM courses are not weighted in Charles County, but are in other districts. It would be interesting to know if giving an honors option to these classes would attract more students to these classes, the TAM program, and the teaching profession. Finally, understanding how to allocate resources to ensure all students are successful will require greater transparency of data and better assessment of curriculum and program effectiveness. For example, Charles County Ready to Read data for the 2021 school year show that 606 kindergarten students were identified as at risk for reading difficulties. 572 of them received supplemental instruction. Additionally, 1,141 first graders were identified, and 1083 received supplemental instruction. This was during virtual learning year. These students are now in first and second grade, and I expect that they are still struggling. Sure. How will the district respond to ensure that there is a comprehensive approach to literacy instruction and supplemental support? I look forward to learning more about the district's work on the blueprint, and welcome additional opportunities to be involved. Our students and communities deserve a school system that fully implements what the blueprint offers, and is open and transparent about its plan for implementation. Thank you for letting me speak.
We have one virtual speaker. I'll turn it over to Ms. Mackey.
I'm trying to get Ms. Smith into provide her comments. So our virtual speaker, I'm having trouble asking her to unmute.
That's our last speaker.
I can reach out to her and see if she can send her comments down chronically, if
So, good evening, Ms. Wilson, Ms. McGraw, board members. We are here to have a work session regarding the blueprint and going a little bit in depth. You have staff members that are here to answer any detailed questions. All of you should have in front of you a quite small binder, really a one-night reading, if you will, that we really wanted you to have all of the information that you need. Chris Miller should be coming up, and as she comes up, she wanted to let me know also that the binder is actually not fully completed yet, that you will get additional items for your binder as we continue through and we get updates, and we find out more information. Should just know that this is just the first part of the binder. So, this evening, we will proceed by going through each section, and Ms., are you coming up, Ms. Acton, as well? Great. Okay, so Ms. Miller and Ms. Acton will be leading our conversations. There is absolutely, however the board wants to continue, if they want to wait till we go through some of the slides and then ask questions, and we'll also be taking some notes. And I just want to note that there's a lot of questions that we still have questions about, and so we put some prompting questions as well that we still need more information on. So just know that this is one of a series of informational sessions, and the more that we know, the more that we'll bring it back to the board and the community at large. So with that, I'll turn it to these two wonderful women to get us going.
Good evening, Board Chairwoman Wilson, Vice Chairwoman McGraw, board members, Dr. Navarro, and Assistant Superintendents. My name is Chris Miller. I am the Coordinator of District Innovation, and I am your Blueprint Implementation Coordinator. In front of you, you have a very large binder, and that binder is intended for you to bring to meetings when we discuss the blueprint, so you can keep everything, all of your artifacts, in one spot. As we go through the presentation today, I'm going to reference the three sections that are in the binder. In the very last section, you'll see there is a printed version of this PowerPoint if you wanted to follow along with it as well, and I know that Ms. Doublefield also posted it to Board Docs for you. So this presentation's going to contain a great deal of information. As we talked about earlier at the Legislative Breakfast, this is a very long bill, and the purpose of the bill is to not, we're not checking boxes. It's not for compliance. We're trying to create habits here in Charles County and in the state of Maryland that will make our schools competitive with schools around the world. So the presentation, Bill, House Bill 1300 is approximately 236 pages, and there is an accompanying bill, House Bill 1372, and the intention of that bill is for you to read them together. House Bill 1372 was written after the pandemic, and it was to address some of the due dates and to address the learning loss that took place because of COVID. I want to make sure that we understand that while we are going to cover a great deal of information tonight, it's impossible for us to go over every single line item inside of the bill. We would be here for days if that were the case. I'm going to highlight some very important information from it, and again, I encourage you to ask any questions. Ms. Acton is going to address funding questions when it comes to the blueprint. What we're going to do is we're going to go through the blueprint by the five different policy areas. I'm going to give you a little background information. I'm going to ask for some questions that you have after each of the policy areas, and then, as Dr. Navarro shared with you, there are a great deal of unanswered questions and information that we don't know yet, and we've created some guiding questions that will be used for our steering groups, who will help to make decisions and policy around the blueprint implementation here in Charles County. Before I do get started, I want to introduce, I want to share the leads of our steering committees, because they are here tonight with us. We have Policy Area One, we have Beth Soarsby, that's with us. Policy Area Two, we have Ms. Nikki Majors. Policy Area Three, we have Ms. Becky Rupert. Policy Area Four, Mr. Kevin Lowens. Policy Area Five, Mr. Stephen Roberts. And I want to thank them for joining us here tonight. So when we give information and we talk about the blueprint, my first question always is, how many of you have heard of the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education? And oftentimes, we see about maybe 20% to 30% of people raise their hands. And then when I say, "How many of you have heard of the Kerwin Commission?", and almost everybody raises their hand, right? So, the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Teaching was headed by Dr. Britt Kerwin, and he is the gentleman that is there at the center of the podium. And I have heard that he's very embarrassed that we refer to it as the Kerwin Commission, because it wasn't just his work. It was the work of 25 different group, different stakeholders, legislators, and different stakeholder leaders around the state, and they met from 2016 to 2019. And they were given two charges: to first review and recommend any needed changes to the current funding for education formulas here in Maryland, and to make policy recommendations to enable Maryland's pre-K to 12 system to perform at the level of the best-performing school systems in the world. So the Commission spent time reviewing adequate per-pupil base cost amounts by using actual expenditure levels of schools and school districts around the world that were accelerating on their performance objectives. So then the Commission put the brakes on, and they said, "Wait a minute. Before we can focus on funding, we need to focus on what is it that we need to fund? What makes schools so great?" So in 2017, the Commission asked the National Center on Education and the Economy to perform a gap analysis to compare Maryland to top-performing countries and states, and to identify the policy priorities and strategies to consider in conjunction with funding changing, with changing funding formulas. The top performers that they looked at were Finland, Singapore, Ontario, Canada, Shanghai, China, and Massachusetts. So the National Center on Education and the Economy based its gap analysis on the nine building blocks for world-class education, and recommended several reforms in Maryland to achieve student outcomes that are comparable with top-performing systems. Based on the findings, this is what the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education said about Maryland education. Maryland students perform at or below the median among the 50 states in reading and math. Maryland is considered a regressive state in terms of school funding. Maryland has an unacceptably large achievement gap based on race and income. Maryland has a severe teacher shortage and retention problems, and only about 40% of Maryland public high school graduates meet the state's college and career readiness standards. So these are things that we've heard in not just Charles County, especially when it comes to our issues with teacher shortages. This is a statewide problem. So based on the recommendations from the Commission, House Bill 1300 passed in 2020. It was vetoed due to COVID and funding uncertainty, and became law following the veto override in the 2021 session. This 235-page bill contains comprehensive funding and policy reforms in five major policy areas, and it's based on the report from the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education. If you look at the second tab of your binder, you'll see that very thick information, that is House Bill 1300. And in 1300, in that document, you're going to see my handwriting written all over it. I didn't make a mistake. I purposely wrote in it for you. What I did was, is I took House Bill 1300, and I took House Bill 1372, and I've combined them together. We don't have that information yet from the legislators. They have promised us that we will, but what I've done was made it easier. If you're interested in reading the entire bill, you can go ahead and do so. House Bill 1372 is after that. That was the second clipped information in your binder. I've also created kind of a table of contents for you, so if you're interested in looking at specific policy numbers, you'll see that you can look at the specific pages based on House Bill 1300. So House Bill 1372, it did pass in 2021, and it updates and addresses COVID issues. We're talking about increasing technology, funding, and requiring local boards to implement summer school programs, I'm sure you remember that, this past summer and next summer as well, provide tutorings and supplemental instruction, and address trauma and behavioral health issues. In House Bill 1300 and 1372, there is something called the AIB, the Accountability and Implementation. So the primary responsibility of this board is to hold school districts responsible for implementing the goals of the blueprint. It is an independent agency, and it has the authority to withhold state funds to school systems that are implementing, that are not implementing the blueprint. There's a seven-member board named in October, where we will have to produce our blueprint implementation plan. There'll be various reports that are due throughout the year, things that we have already turned in when they come out. They will be monitoring teacher placement, achievement gaps, and our career ladder. It has been stated that the AIB has more power than the Maryland Board of Education, because of its ability to withhold funds to schools that are, or to districts that are not in compliance of the blueprint. You may have heard there was some controversy with the AIB. Governor Hogan received names from the nominating committee, and he requested that additional names be sent to him. The controversy lies that there is no representation on the AIB board from Western Maryland, the Eastern Shore, and Southern Maryland, including Prince George's County. The county of residence for all seven of the AIB members, they do reside in Montgomery County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, and Anarundel County. So what is this implementation plan? We are required to turn in a plan to the AIB on June 15th, 2022. The criteria for the plan will, the latest that we will receive it is on August, April 1st, excuse me, 2022. And so within this plan, we need to address the five policy areas that we're going to talk about today. So what is our structure for implementation here? As we talked about earlier this morning at the Legislative Breakfast, it is law, in the blueprint, that a local board, with the approval of the local government, must state that there is an implementation coordinator for the county. That is me. That's why we're here tonight. The implementation coordinators are being organized right now by PZAM, the Public School Superintendent's Association of Maryland. We are meeting monthly to, right now, gather intelligence and to share resources about the blueprint. The implementation coordinators from Calvert and St. Mary's and myself, we meet weekly, and I would be remiss if I didn't publicly thank them, Mr. Kevin Michael from Calvert County, and Dr. Jeff Mayer from St. Mary's County. We've shared a great deal of information. We have a shared Google Drive where everything that we do gets thrown together. It has been a really great partnership. We also have an advisory group. The advisory group are the five policymaker leads, I'm sorry, the steering committee leads that I introduced earlier. We meet on a weekly basis, or a monthly basis, excuse me, and the steering committees meet at least monthly, with one group meeting twice a month. Three of the five committees have already established their meeting schedules for the year. So as I stated before, there are five policy areas. Our first policy area, again, early childhood education. Policy Area Two, high-quality and diverse teacher leaders. Policy Area Three, college and career-ready pathways. Policy Area Four, more resources to ensure all students are successful. And Policy Area Five, governance and accountability. We held a kickoff meeting at La Plata High School on October 8th to begin this work. Like I said, Section Two of your binder, I'm sorry, I didn't say this. Section Two of your binder has a list of all of the steering committee members and where they are representing. I also have questions and guiding document for each of the five committees in that area that tells them where their focus is. You know, my work always focuses on where are we going, where are we now, and how do we get there? And that's really been the three questions that we have, we are using to guide our steering committees, and in Section Two of your binder there, you will see all of the things that each of the five policy areas is responsible for. With that being said, we're going to start with early childhood education, Policy Area One. We're going to look at how pre-K will be expanding, cost sharing on a sliding scale, so talking about the idea of collecting tuition for public school education, requirements of our early childhood staff, and private providers receiving public funding. So we talked briefly about this earlier at the Legislative Breakfast, and we're looking at the expansion of full-day pre-kindergarten to qualifying students by adding private community providers. So Tier One would include four-year-old, four-year-old students with family income less than or equal to 300% of the federal poverty level. That's beginning next school year. And three-year-olds would fall into that category where we would offer pre-kindergarten in the year '25, '26. Tier Two students, which are four-year-olds with a family income that's between 300 and 600% of the poverty level, beginning in school year '24, '25, to expand socio-economic diversity. And Tier Three, which are our four-year-old, family income is more than 600% of the federal poverty level. Currently, MSDE has been offering pre-K grant programs that have been in place to assist the expansion of our pre-K programs, and they are also available to private providers to provide access to full-day pre-K programs. Just looking at the difference in what currently is what we call a Category One student, so all of our Category One students who apply for pre-K, we need to provide access to them. Right now, it's at 185% of the federal poverty level, $49,025 for a family of four. Next school year, '22, '23, that goes, that number goes up to 300% of the federal poverty level. That's $79,500 for a family of four. That's an enormous difference, looking at the number of students that will, that should have access to a pre-K program for next school year. So cost of quality, funding provided for next school year starts, per-pupil amounts begin at $10,094 for next school year, an increase to $19,526 by fiscal year '30, and it will also be adjusted for inflation. So we talked about this, I mentioned earlier, this idea of cost sharing. So a sliding scale for cost sharing for Tier Two students will be established by MSDE, and local districts can charge tuition for our Tier Two students on a sliding scale. This is for students who fall between 300 and 1% and 600% of the federal poverty line. Beginning in '25, '26, pre-K programs must have a teacher that is certified in early childhood education, or have a bachelor's degree pursuing early childhood education in an approved alternative prep program. Instructional assistants must have a child development associate, a CDA, or an associate's degree. Students are classroom personnel ratio of 1 to 10, with a maximum number of 20 students in a classroom. This is inclusion of all students regardless of disability, and the quality rating level of Maryland Excel's program must be at a certain level. Maryland Excel's is the state's quality rating and improvement system for licensed care and early childhood programs that meet nationally-recognized quality standards. Please understand that these are requirements even for private providers if they want to receive state funding. in a classroom. This is inclusion of all students regardless of disability. And the quality rating level of Maryland excels program must be at a certain level. Maryland excels is the state's quality rating and improvement system for licensed care in early childhood programs that meet nationally-recognized quality standards. Please understand that these are requirements even for private providers if they want to receive state funding. Beginning next school year, 22, 23, private pre-K providers must account for 30% of the total providers in the county. The proportion of private providers needs to increase by 5% per year until 26, 27, when private providers shall account for 50% of the total providers in the county. Local school systems can apply for waivers if there is not enough private daycares available. Priority has to be given to our tier-one students, students with disabilities, homeless youth, and English learners. The early learning branch at MSD has stated that they have continued to provide information to licensed private providers here in Charles County and throughout the state regarding how to receive public funding for those that are seeking it. Currently, based on the information gathered, we believe Charles County has less than five private providers that would meet the requirements to receive public funding. So, we have some, before we go here, let me share with you what our questions are that are going to guide our work and guide our steering committees. So when we're talking about extending the access for our pre-K students, where are we going to house these additional pre-K classrooms? There is language in the bill that allows us to think outside of the box. Remember, it's not about compliance, we're talking about creating habits that will really have a very, a huge impact on our students. So it suggests looking at senior centers, or looking at spaces that are not currently used in the county to help expand pre-K programs. Are we expected to have pre-K for tier-one for all students next year? Or are we going to have to continue to phase them in as we already have been doing? How will we collect income information for the sliding scale? Will we collect a family share? And if so, how will we collect tuition? How can we increase the number of private providers in Charles County? And how do we recruit and retain both certificated teachers and instructional assistants when it comes to not only early childhood, but it comes to all of our teachers and employees here? So I guess I'll come back here.
Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you very much, Ms. Miller, for the presentation. In the private providers, do you have a sense of how many, and we'll just say, three- or four-year-olds are in private providers versus being watched at home by somebody else?
I don't have that information. And honestly, I don't, unless they're a licensed daycare program, I don't know that we have access to that. But it's certainly something that we can look into.
Sure. I mean, the point, the point being, right, I mean, we've talked about this before at the board, and it may have been you, and several years ago, when current was coming about, that, and you mentioned having space, right? I mean, it'd be great if we could snap our fingers and have a pre-K added to each school, but that's not going to happen. So we already have places that have space, but as you mentioned, only 5% meet the criteria. We could, we could work with them and make an investment in them to help them meet the criteria, but how many kids, that's my question, how many kids versus the entire population of three- and four-year-olds are we really going to reach? In other words, you know, there's a lot of people that can't afford daycare, so they're being watched by somebody else. So I suppose you could look at census numbers and see what the census numbers are and subtract out what you know are in the, are in the, are in the private daycares that are licensed and get that. But I was just curious if we had a way to...
We have some information. I think Beth is trying to pull up some data.
Yeah.
Do you want to come up to the mic? See what you have.
So each year, our kindergarten students are administered the kindergarten readiness assessment. When parents register their child for kindergarten, they are supposed to indicate where their prior care pre-K experience was. So we do have some data based on the past few years of prior care data of where students are. So on the last administration of the kindergarten readiness assessment, which was back in 2019, 2020, 30% of our students in kindergarten, their pre-K year was spent in informal care. So they were either at home or cared for by a family member. It looks like 4% were in a family childcare center, and then 11% were in, like, a licensed childcare center. And then we had 3% in a non-public nursery school. And then we had 24% in a half-day public pre-K program, and another 18% in a full-day public pre-K program.
Okay. Presumably in this county, but not necessarily.
Not necessarily. They could have been in another county, or even in another neighboring state that, and then moved to Charles County.
Okay, but public pre-K nonetheless.
And then also 2% attended a Head Start program.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for that answer to everything that I had.
Mr. Handcock.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Miller, Ms. Akin, thank you. I know you guys have had a very long day today. Thank you for that, for that presentation. One thing that really jumps out at me, that's very concerning to me anyway, is that a tier-three student enrolling in pre-K by FY30 is going to be paying a tuition on their own at $19,000? That's crazy. No, I mean, think about it. We're setting up a system that the haves and the have-nots, we're going to force the haves, a child that's born into a family with means is not going to be able to afford a public education. If it starts at pre-K, it's going to follow them throughout their, their whole public edu, it's not going to be a public education, it's not going to be an option for them because that's a college tuition cost. And they're not going to be in the public school system. We are going to culturally divide who is in the public school system and who is not. That is deeply, deeply, deeply concerning to me. Is that a state figure?
It is.
That is a state figure.
It is. And just so you know, the board can make the decision to not collect tuition. You don't have to, we do not have to charge tuition to them. But we will not get funding from the state for those...
Understood.
Yeah.
That just blows my mind. I mean, that is something that, we really will walk down a very dark and narrow road if we go that route. I mean, just because, now granted, I totally understand that the tier-one should have, and I believe they have had, first priority with pre-K, and that shouldn't change, but there's a lot of students that can't help the means that they were born into that need pre-K. And that's very concerning to me. Thank you for bringing that to light. And thank you for your presentation so far.
So on one of your slides, it indicated inclusion, and so that means the facility has to be in a certain state. And I know there's a lot of, we have tons of questions, and we know that this is early in the process. So does that mean that there's got to be a, someone from Mr. Heim's office that acts as a liaison with all of these facilities?
So we do, we have Mr. Ken Shrek, who is on the policy area one. And he has been very helpful so far with the committee names and gaining some access. But one of the things that we do as a group is, although we are steering committees, we take the information to Dr. Navarro and her ops team. Certainly, you know, we're not going to determine that we need to use this building. There is a process where we're reporting back to Dr. Navarro and her team, and including her in these decisions. And certainly, when it comes to planning and facilities, Mr. Heim's office will be involved in that.
Okay. And my second question is along the same lines as Mr. Lucas, in terms of forecasting, how do we determine, and again, this, we're early in the process, there's a lot of stuff that you guys have to figure out, but given the fact that we are a growing county, we now have to anticipate in addition to what we see kindergarten, all this other growth, because it's just about that age point that we can have a population spike. And so it's going to be very hard, logistically, to anticipate that growth, and which committee or steering committee would be responsible, or is that part of enrollment forecasting? I would be interested in the plan, maybe further down the line, how you're going to tackle, tackle that, because it's a tidal wave that is potentially coming at us.
It is, especially because we don't collect family income unless they are applying for category-one. So expanding that number up to 300%, we don't have a way to know who would, how many more would qualify because of that.
Because we're really going to have to work with local agencies, you know, census only happens so, so often. That's going to be an additional burden as part of this process. And then as far as the private sector is concerned, the requirement for certification, who's responsible for their oversight?
The AIB board, I would imagine, will be overseeing that.
Okay, but we, as a public school system, would not?
No.
Okay.
Not unless something changes, but as of right now.
And their funding comes directly from the state, so it doesn't pass through us to go to them.
And I'm imagining, based on forecasting, they already know what, how, what their shortages are in that specific area. I would, I would, I would hope that the state is looking at that. Mrs. McGraw?
Yes, I just have a question about the steering committee. As I look at the membership of each of the policy areas, it's a very comprehensive list of stakeholders, but I do not see a parent component. Are there plans to include parents somewhere down the line, or what's the plan?
There is, so there are several parents on that steering committee.
Okay.
There's at least three on each of the committees that serve as parents of children here in Charles County Public Schools. We also have plans to have, would like to come back and have presentations at the board. We would also like to have town hall meetings. And before the blueprint is due in June, we, it is important that we determine a way to get feedback from our community stakeholders, not just parents, but taxpayers and, and other residents here in Charles County.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, ready?
Thank you.
So policy area two, high quality and diverse teachers and leaders. We're going to look at how the blueprint is trying to elevate the teaching profession. We're going to look at career ladders, national board certification, and teacher evaluations. So beginning next school year, July 1st, 2022, certain teacher salaries increases associated with the career ladder must be implemented. So $10,000 for a national board certificated teacher, and you see that there's an asterisk beside that, because within the blueprint, the word "teacher" is very specific. It says a certified public school employee who is primarily responsible and accountable for teaching students in the class. So currently, we have 33 nationally-board certified teachers in Charles County Public Schools, but not all 33 of them are still teaching in the classroom. We do have some nationally-board certified teachers that are serving as ILT, and also that are serving here in the role at central office. An additional, on top of the $10,000, an additional $7,000 will be given for nationally-board certified teachers that are teaching in a low-performing school. And you see that there is an aster, there are two asterisks here. We need to establish what a low-performing school means. Right now, we are working with PIZAM and the local, the district implementation coordinators to try and have a shared definition of low-performing schools. And this, my concern is if we have a different definition of neighboring districts, we could lose teachers that have a easier way to attract a low-performing school. These funds, these salary increases are cumulative. So a teacher next year has potential to earn an additional $17,000 just for being nationally-board certified and for teaching at a low-performing school. $5,000 for national board certified teacher that becomes a lead teacher, $10,000 for a distinguished teacher, $15,000 for a teacher that becomes a professor-distinguished teacher, and $15,000 for a nationally-board teacher that becomes a distinguished principal. We're going to look at these career ladders and these career tracks here. One of the things that I want you to remember that if we have a teacher that is earning the additional $10,000 for being nationally-board certified, and then gets an extra $7,000 for becoming a, for teaching at a low-performing school, that's $17,000. Well, if that school, after several years, or even after a year, is no longer a low-performing school because of all the work the teachers do, that teacher does not lose that $7,000. They get to keep that additional $7,000, even if the school is no longer considered low-performing. So by July 1st, 2024, we are looking at a career ladder that will be mandatory for those that are hired after that date. Teachers that are hired before that date do not have to participate in the career ladder, but we want to encourage them to do so. The career ladder is intended to transform the teaching, teaching into a high-status profession, incentivize teachers to stay in the classroom, create higher salaries for our teachers, and to allow teachers time to collaborate and reflect on their practice. So here's a chart, again, that was shared with me from a colleague in St. Mary's County. And I just think it's, he did such a great job capturing what that career ladder looks like. So if you look and you see there, level one, two, and three, when we're talking about the teacher track, the average time for teachers spent in the classroom should be at 60%, while four, the other 40% is working with students to support them, whether it's tutoring, it's working in small groups, working one-on-one. But the time that is spent in the classroom is less, could be attending professional learning, could be coaching their colleagues. So level one is just a certificated teacher. Level two goes up to teachers that are pursuing national board certification or their master's degree. Level three would be a nationally-board certified teacher or equivalent, because there are some different educational tracks here for our teachers that are employed here, that they don't have nationally-board certification. So we would have to identify what that would be if they don't have the option for national board certification. And you notice that the vice principals, 20% teaching. So our vice principals will be in the classroom, teaching students for 20% of their working hours. Level four, we have, when we talk about that lead teacher, distinguished teacher, professor, distinguished teacher, we're looking at less and less time that teachers are teaching, whether spending additional time coaching teachers, or working with teachers that, or working with students that need additional instruction or other means. It is recommended that principals teach 10% of the time, but it is not mandated like our vice principals are. Beginning July 1st, 2026, minimum teacher salary will increase to $60,000. Our current teacher salary is $50,248. And but... And between 2019, July first, and June thirtieth, 2024, teachers shall receive at least a ten percent salary increase above the negotiated schedule of salaries. So when we talk about this, and while the blueprint does not address educators outside of the classroom, we need to think about how that minimum teacher's salary, how that impacts other professions that are not considered teachers. The local teacher evaluation system needs to be aligned to the National Board for Professional Teaching. Currently, our teacher evaluation is aligned to Charlotte Danielson's Framework for Teaching. That's fifty percent of the teacher evaluation, while currently, the other fifty percent is based on student grow. The goal is to have this new teacher evaluation system that is, includes peer assistance and review. It defines expectations for an evaluator's skill and knowledge. It measures performance and provides personalized feedback and is aligned to the teacher's strengths, needs, and professional learning context. Teacher prep programs in Maryland are going to change a little bit. The bill requires more experience for our teachers that are in the classroom as they're developing to become teachers. Teachers that are coming from out of state, colleges and universities, will be required to pass an additional exam within eighteen months of being hired, unless they are nationally board certified. So I want you to think about the impact that we have, especially since many of our teachers do come from out of state. I think of that as myself, as a former Pennsylvanian, now a Marylander, that on top of the certification, the certified process and the test that I was required to take in another state, I will also have to take additional tests within coming to Maryland and getting a job. The AIB will monitor teacher prep programs, teacher candidates, and the diversity of our teachers that we hire. And grants are going to be available to institutes of higher education, including some specifically directed to historically black colleges and universities to increase diverse teaching candidates. So again, before I ask you your questions, I want to share with you some of the guiding questions of Policy Area Two Steering Committee. How will we encourage those that are hired prior to July one, 2024, to participate in the career ladder? Will we need to create a pay scale that's aligned to the career ladder? What are other alternative plans for teacher certification that we can pursue? Is resident or alternative teaching prep program something that we should look into here in Charles County? What will the new teacher evaluation look like? How will we support other teachers coming from out of Maryland to pass this additional test for certification? And how can we create partnerships with others to support those teachers pursuing national board certification? So with that being all of that, questions for Policy Area Two?
So, so I will understand, but the public as well. Can you give a brief overview of what it entails to be nationally board certified? And say, for example, Nikki hires me as a new teacher. I've been in the school system, say, two or three years, and I decide to start the process. What's the average time to complete it? You know, how, what's entailed?
So national board certification, according to the blueprint, is really the gold standard of teaching, right? And what it does is it asks teachers to be very reflective in their process. They will videotape themselves, different lessons that they will have. And there's different components in which they'll have to submit reflections and assessments on, based on the different attributes of the national board certification process. So it is not something that, it's not something that, I don't want to say it's, it's not something that is easy, because it's not, it's not intended to be easy. But it's something that we want to encourage our teachers to do, because we're asking them to reflect on their current practice and determine what their current practice looks like and how they can improve teaching and learning. So with that being said, it often takes between one to two years to become nationally board certified.
Okay, Mr. Lucas?
Let's go first, please.
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the twenty percent of teaching time for a vice principal. Would that, do you have any idea of what that might include? Would it be like tutoring, small group, you don't know yet?
We don't know yet.
I can't imagine when that will fit into a vice principal's day, because they have, there's no time to breathe, as it is. And then to add a teaching component is just gonna, who's going to want to be an administrator anymore?
So one of the things that Ms. Acton's going to talk about are some unintended consequences of the blueprint. It, it's likely, and I don't want to say, it's likely we'll have to consider adding additional staff to cover for vice principals when they're in the classroom. That's an unintended consequence of the blueprint. I understand the theory behind it. We want our administrators to be in the classroom, because we're, the intention is that our principals and our vice principals are the cream of the crop, right? They are our best educators that have chosen to leave the classroom. And we want them to have connections with students. We want them to have the ability to, you know, tutor them or teach them. But what will that look like? We don't know that yet.
Okay. Mr. Lucas?
Thanks. So as you go through these, I'm looking for the metrics that we're going to be held to. And so for this one, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, but the only thing that I saw that was definitive was the pay, that we have to pay teachers and what we have to pay them when they get those various certifications. And I heard you talk about other things, which I'm in favor of, but I didn't hear, like, I didn't hear any, any percentages around those, like hiring more teachers that are minority teachers and things like that. So, I mean, so was that, as we go through this, I mean, is that, for this particular one, was the pay the only?
Well, there's pay and there's the career ladder. And so what the AIB will be doing is, and it's not very clear in the blueprint that I, you know, and again, as I said this morning, I rely on Mr. Schwartz and his interpretation of laws, because I'm a social studies teacher. So I'm not just, I am, no. But it is, that is one of the things that we've talked about with the implementation coordinators, that when it comes to looking at the diversity of our workforce, it doesn't say how the AIB is going to hold us accountable for that. However, it will be looking at the diversity of our workforce. It will be looking at how we place our students. Are we placing students who, in the past, subgroups of students who have not performed well on state assessments? What teachers are we placing them with? Are we placing them with teachers who are new? Are we placing them with teachers that lack experience or are not certified? But it has not said how it's going to hold us accountable and specifically how it's going to collect that information.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, I asked that because, and this came up this morning, you know, we need to provide to our resource sponsors what it's going to take to do this. And they're going to ask those same questions. And I know we're not going to answer it now, but it would be, it'd be great if we had, you know, just what we think is the bare threshold of what we have to meet and then maybe our objective of what we'd like to meet. And then there's obviously a monetary impact between those things. But maybe as this moves forward, some of those ambiguities will become a little clearer, because I'm sure other school districts have those same questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So Policy Area Three, College and Career Ready Pathways. We're going to look at benchmark instructional system that's fully aligned to college and career-ready standards for pre-K to twelfth grade. Pathways for students that are on target or pathways for students that need additional supports to meet college and career readiness, and English and math standards to be successful in post-secondary courses. So for students who achieve college and career readiness at the end of tenth grade, which currently we do, pre-COVID, we were using PARC, we will be using MCAP for that, we need to create pathways for students to choose to pursue some highly competitive college programs that can include advanced placement, AP, or international baccalaureate, which is IB, dual enrollment, where students have the opportunity to earn an associate's degree at no cost to students, and/or career and technical education programs that include workplace experience and apprenticeship that lead to industry-recognized credentials. For students who have not achieved college and career readiness by the end of tenth grade, we must design a system that is in conjunction with the local community college to ensure students are college and career-ready by the end of twelfth grade. We're going to do that by quickly identifying students who are falling behind, providing individualized, appropriate instruction and support, and providing those equitable resources. Remember, we talked earlier this morning that we really need to have this message, the difference between equity and equality. We need to give students what they need at the time that they need it. School systems will need to outline in our blueprint plan how we plan to adapt curriculum and instruction and the organization of the day to enable more students to be college and career-ready by the end of tenth grade, how we're going to close these achievement gaps, avoid disproportionate placement of students and subgroups with current achievement gaps with our novice teachers, and how we can identify gifted and talented students as college and career-ready in middle school. There is a state CTE committee that is very similar to the AIB. It's created within the governor's workforce, and it has created an expert review team that has the authority to make recommendations to the I, A, I, AIB, excuse me, AIB to withhold funding. So there will be school visits planned by the CTE review team. It will review school and district CTE pathways to make recommendations to them. It'll conduct evaluations of career counseling programs and establish goals for increasing apprenticeship. So with Policy Area Three, here are some of the guiding questions that we've created for our steering committees. So those, what will the program for those not college and career-ready? What will that look like? What will career counseling look like in middle school? How will we identify gifted and talented students in middle school? Do current pathways we have for CTE align with the scope of the blueprint? How can we leverage partnerships that we have here in the county to create these pathways that will help move student learning forward? And how do we ensure access to all students? So with that, questions?
Mrs. Battle-Lophart?
You guys knew it, this is my area. One of the things that I wanted to ask, and it's a part of one of your questions, but I wanted to wait from the other presentation. But when we talk about teachers now, and the expectation, as you stated earlier, is gold standard. In this area, something that we should, I feel we should focus on is gold standard readiness for those students that are interested. And so we can make it a little bit more attractive so we can find those that are interested in going in the teaching field. However, it will apply to all the programs, but specifically because that's a challenge for us nationally, but specifically to Charles County Public Schools, is how can we create a program that's gold standard readiness, like a pre-prep to start preparing them on our side for them to be intrigued, to continue to go into teaching? It's something that I would, you know, really would like to see if we could start having conversations around as well, because we're talking about, in the previous section policy, we're talking about the current people that we have and the new ones that are coming in. But how are we preparing the ones that are not here yet? So that's my part about this, and then I could keep going about that. But that's the main focus of that triggered me in the last couple of slides. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, because Ms. Pearson is here, and she's leading that policy area, that's something that will add to our guiding questions for that group. Thank you.
I'm just curious, I know this is new in the process, if you know that we're going to be visited by the Accountability Board or the CTE folks, do you guys have any, anything in documentation now to start preparing? Or is it too early in the process?
It's too early. But they have said by the end of ten years that every school in the state will be visited.
You said at the end of ten years?
Ten years.
So we've got a long road. Yeah, right.
They will start with the lowest-performing schools, according to the blueprint. And currently, that does not include any schools in Charles County.
Thank you.
I'm going backwards. Sorry. Policy Area Four, we're going to look at broad and sustained new academic, social service, and health supports for students in schools that need them the most. Remember, I'm going to keep bringing up that idea of equity versus equality. I saw it on Twitter. Equity or equality is giving everybody a shoe. Equity is giving everybody a shoe that fits. We have to keep that in mind when we're talking about giving resources to students that need it. Increasing funding for special education to improve educational outcomes. Additional funding for our English learners. Establishing a transitional supplemental instruction program for struggling learners. And creating a new program for schools with high concentration of students living in poverty. Behavioral Health Services Coordinator. The blueprint states that we must have one of these, and we do. Behavioral Health Services means trauma-informed prevention, intervention and treatment services for the social, emotional, psychological, and behavioral and physical health of students, including behavioral, mental health, and substance use disorders. Our Behavioral Health Services Coordinator coordinates behavioral health services and the referral process, builds community and supports and partnerships, and develops and implements a standardized screening to identify the students with behavioral health services needs using an evidence-based measurement approach. As you may be aware, there are mandatory trainings that all school staff, including those at Starky, those that are employed by Charles County Public Schools, must take to understand the responsibility that we have to youth suicide risk and resources to help students in crisis. We also need to understand and be able to recognize students experiencing trauma or violence out of school and how to refer students to Behavioral Health Services. So as I stated before, funding for special education and English learners will increase. Blueprint funds previously awarded to Charles County have funded additional positions, including teachers, our behavior specialists, instructional specialists in special ed, and transition support staff. Transitional supplemental instruction, TSI, as it's referred to here in the blueprint. These are services provided at the school level for struggling learners. And notice that struggling learners does have an asterisk beside it, because according to the blueprint, a struggling learner is defined as a K to three student not on grade level for reading. K to three, not on grade level for reading. The bill's very specific, as it does address reading. However, if we can prove that a school does not need transitional supplemental instruction in reading, we can provide it in math. But it is very specific that the TSI- in math, but it is very specific that the TSI is for reading. So, we have used TS, we have used funds for transitional supplemental instruction, especially due to COVID and learning laws. It states one-on-one and small group tutoring of not more than four students with a certified teacher, a teaching assistant, or any other trained professional, cross-age peer tutoring, and screening, identifying, and addressing literacy deficits. Concentration of Poverty Grant, we do have a community school here in Charles County. It's Dr. Mudd Elementary School, and what it does, initially, schools having 80% or more of their students eligible for compensatory education funding meet the Concentration of Poverty threshold for the Community Schools Program. So, it promotes active family and community engagement, including educational opportunities for adults and family members of the students at the school who live in the neighborhood at the community. We do have a community school coordinator as we are mandated by law to have one, and this person coordinates the support for the programs that address our out-of-school learning barriers for students and families. It could include tutoring, mental health services, English language learning courses, and other wraparound services based on the needs of the community. So, our questions for Policy Area Four, how do we continue to create equitable opportunities for students that need it the most? What will wraparound services look like at Dr. Mudd? The community school coordinator has to perform a needs assessment and has to be very specific in how she addresses the needs of the community. How can we best expand community schools in future years to serve the needs of a specific, specified community? How do we strategically place teachers with students that are in the need, that, in the most need? And how do we make sure our stakeholders understand equity versus equality? So, that being said, for Policy Area Four, questions?
Mrs. Battle Lockhart?
I've mentioned this a couple of times, and since this is the area where it may fall, is I know that Title I already gets support through, you know, from the state because of where they are in numbers, but for those schools that have those same types of students that are not labeled Title I, is that's where we would focus on that whole equitable piece that I'm, that you're mentioning right now, correct?
We can, certainly, but our Concentration of Poverty Grant is specified in, so each year, the threshold of how to become a, a community school lowers the, the number of, or the percentage of free and reduced meal students that you have at a school becomes lower and lower, so hopefully that will help us grow our community schools programs. But you are correct, our Title I students, our schools, they do receive additional funds, and that is because of their high free and reduced meal rate. But certainly, looking at how we have used some blueprint money that has come in, in the past, I think, two years, a year or two years, some positions have been created at all of our schools to help with the reading deficiencies that we're seeing in our younger students that create K to three, so that is certainly something that we have highlighted here, talking about that idea of equity versus equality.
Thank you so much. Mr. Lucas?
My question was, was in line a little bit with Ms. Battle Lockhart, so just so I'm clear in public, so Title I schools, they have, when they exceed 40% free and reduced, are they, are they labeled Title, Title I, or what's, what's the criteria?
So, the, the school system, so the federal government has a designation, but the school system can actually, actually designate its threshold within the school system that it designates for Title I schools. So, we could say that a threshold that we want to service using federal Title I dollars, elementary, middle, or high schools. We've made a decision to focus and target elementary schools, and I believe the target in Title I schools is six, I, I can't, I gotta come back to you with the actual number that we look at, but we make that determination based on the poverty levels because it goes directly to the federal government.
And, and I want to make sure that I understand what you said earlier. So, a, a community school then is defined, you mentioned 80%, and I wanted to make sure I understood, can you just repeat that again, 80%?
For this current year.
Free and reduced.
Free and reduced.
Okay, so.
But the threshold of that number, that 80% goes down every year.
So, so when you said that, because when I, when I saw your, your third bullet here, how can we best expand community schools, I'm like, well, why would we want to do that? Okay, so I see what you're saying there because the threshold goes down, so as that happens.
I'm sorry.
How we can get, no, no, that, that, that makes sense now.
I'm glad you clarified that, I'm not wishing.
Yeah, 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 no, I, I get it. So, so I guess by, by definition, every, every community school would be a Title I school?
Potentially, so depending, well, right now at the, at the threshold, that might be the case for most LEAs because the threshold of most school systems in Maryland for Title I designation is probably somewhere around 70 and higher. Some school systems may be a little bit lower. That's a local decision. I do want to point out that the community school definition, there's a community school definition per the blueprint, so there's a whole movement of community schools nationwide. This one is one that is very, very explicit, and I actually know this section of the blueprint very well, with specific amounts of dollars, specific allocations locally, meaning at the state level around the threshold for poverty and how they measure poverty, and the state telling the school districts which schools fall into it, and then a specific also areas of definition of, of community schools around, you heard a little bit about parent education, about health, and also around academics, but so it's very explicit on the areas that it can fund and the kinds of fundings that it can do.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you.
Policy Area Five, Governance and Accountability. So, what we're doing is we've created a Policy Area Five because we want to, to focus on creating structures and protocols to ensure that our school system is in compliance with the law and the blueprint implementation. We want to make sure that we're building and enhancing systems around teacher evaluation, scheduling, data collection, and other aspects of the blueprint. So, Policy Area Five is really a part of all of the other four policy areas. So, we're asking this polit, this steering committee to establish procedures on how we're going to collect data. We're going to look at how we can create procedures to discourage disproportionate placement of novice teachers with students where achievement gaps exist, teacher attendance and how it impacts student achievement, and the rate at which teachers are acquiring steps on the career ladder and the placement at the schools. So, the questions that we have focused on governance and accountability, what protocols need to be established to make sure we're in compliance? How can our group work with the other, how can, how can this group work with the other four steering committees? How do we define a novice teacher? What, what does that mean here in Charles County? What reports will we need to collect in order to track our compliance with the blueprint? And one of the questions was, will we really, do we need to hard schedule our vice principals in a class to, to show proof that we are in compliance with the 20% rule? So, that being, does anybody have any questions for governance and accountability?
Thank you.
So, that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Karen Acton, so she can talk about the blueprint and funding.
Now, the fun stuff, where we have many more questions than we have answers. So, Kerwin restructures the funding formulas to increase and target the per pupil funding to each of the educational goal areas. The state and local share calculation applies to all the major education aid programs, not just the foundation program, which is how it is currently determined. Major education aid programs include the foundation program, comparable wage index grant, transportation aid, post-college and career readiness pathways, compensatory education, concentration of poverty, English learner programs, transitional supplemental instructions, special education, publicly-funded pre-kindergarten, guaranteed tax-based program, and the career ladder. So, all of these programs will now be shared with the state and the local. Changes in how we are calculating student enrollment will be the greater of one prior year eligible students, FTEs, or the three-year moving average minus the school year 2021, which was affected by the pandemic. The increased per pupil funding amount will buy specific values for each component of the major aid program from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2034. It'll be adjusted for inflation in fiscal year 2034. The Department of Legislative Services revenue estimate has developed an estimate of funding changes for each county, which I mentioned this morning. We have projections, but, but it's very unclear how they, what they've used to come up with those numbers, so it's a little hard to determine how that is going to relate to our realities of our enrollments. The revenue estimate is for the change in funding for all major aid programs. There are minimum school funding requirements, and in beginning, in July 1, 2024, specified percentages of formula funding must be distributed to each school by multiplying the per pupil amount times enrollment. This will affect how we prepare our budgets, will need to make sure that, that we have it by school. 75% of the formula funding for most programs must go to each school, 100% for private providers of pre-K and concentration of poverty. There's a minimum school funding report that needs to be prepared annually to Accountability and Implementation Board beginning July 1, 2024. MSD has guidance on implementation and budgeting. By July 1, 2023, MSD must implement a financial management system and student data system capable of tracking and analyzing student-level poverty data and integrating with local school systems data, as well as updating the financial reporting manual. That is huge, absolutely. That's a heavy lift, number one, to have it done by then, but number two, it's pretty comprehensive what they're asking of the system, so we will see, but as it says, they're supposed to analyze the student-level poverty data, which is part of what we're trying to figure out, how we're supposed to know that for pre-K. It's asking a lot of, of this system that they don't have right now. So, increased costs, this is, is what we went over this morning, but I'll, I'll repeat it for, for this meeting. There's increased costs that are not funded, that we have identified at this point that we will have to address in our budgets. Additional teachers may likely be needed since teachers will be teaching 60% of their working time. Additional administrators may likely be needed since vice principals will be teaching 20% of their working hours. An additional staff certificated in support may likely be needed to support increased pre-K and increased reporting to MSD. Additional rooms and space may likely be needed in buildings in our schools or elsewhere to implement pre-K and additional staffing requirements. An additional salary increases for other school staff, administrators, IAs, counselors, et cetera, may likely be needed to maintain equity in the salary scales once the teacher salaries are increased. Questions on funding?
Mr. Hancock?
Besides the obvious, where it's going to come from?
Well, yeah, that's true, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Karen, and thank you, Chris, for that great presentation. I, I really don't have any questions on it because I think we all have questions, and, and you can ask anyone in the county and state branch of government, and they'll have questions, but one thing I would like to say is this was a great presentation, it really was, and we don't have exact answers of what it's going to cost, but Commissioner President Collins, I take him at his word that he wants to work along with us. I, not just from today, but at, at the graduation ceremony we had this summer, had a long conversation with him about trying to, trying to work a little closer and knowing what to expect with the upcoming budget. This, this presentation does not answer a whole lot of questions, but it does give a lot of insight, especially if you give this in-depth presentation and have the ability to ask and answer questions, and I know we all had a brief version of this this morning, however, working alongside you guys, given the, the in-depth present, presentation does answer some questions. I do think it would be a good idea to start right now, working with the county commissioners, to give them the opportunity to have this same presentation that we've had tonight and, and start it soon, and as we go down this journey together and we all learn together that we can provide more information, I do think our county commissioners want to work with us, and they do want to provide as much funding, but they're going to have a heck of a job in, in front of them to provide that funding, and I do think we need to work with them, and I, I would, I would certainly recommend, as one board member, to the rest of my board and to the staff, that, that we do extend the invitation to have this really good presentation that we all received tonight, to have them have the opportunity to receive it and to ask the same questions that we did. The, the answers aren't all there, but when you start looking at what it would cost for a family in a tier three to, to provide pre-K, and then you see the increase for, for first-level teachers jumping by $10,000, the impacts of having vice principals work 20% of their schedule in the classroom, that's going to give them an idea of, it's going to cost some money, and, and I think, I think we owe it to them, so thank you so much. That was a great presentation, and it's, it's a little bit scary, but it's good to know it. Thank you.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. To echo on what my colleague, Mr. Hancock, said, you know, I, I can think back to prior budget presentations, the commissioners and, and our budgets weren't fully approved and, and could pick out some of the things in the budget that would fulfill some of these things, and, and the difference before is that they didn't have to do it. Well, they may say they, they, they want to work with us, well, all the truth is, they don't have a choice, okay? These are mandates, okay? And, and so, so now it's, it's, it's really going to take some collaboration to, to get this done because they, they will have to come up, and then if we don't meet these things, then as you said, we have this overarching board that, that's going to say, well, why aren't you doing this, and then we'll have to answer more questions, so I, I think it's a great opportunity, but it's going to be, it's going to be an arduous task, for sure. Thanks, and I echo Mr. Hancock's comments, this is a really good presentation.
Anybody else, Mrs. Battle Lockhart?
I just want to echo what my two colleagues have said already, presentation this morning, and what David just shared as well. I think some of this, in this presentation, answered some of the questions from this morning, so hopefully they're watching, if they're not, they have an opportunity to sit down and talk with us about it, but I am super excited about what the future holds. It, like it says, a lot, but it just brings a different light to the journey that we've been on this last 18 months, to provide a sense of hope. However, it's going to have to allow a, a lot of patience in the process to know that, you know, we're heading in the right direction to give our students the quality of service, education, and supporting the teachers in a way that they've been waiting for, for such a long time. So, you know, thank you for all your hard work of reading this five times, I'm, I'm looking for, you got me all motivated to read it myself, so I'm looking forward to supporting you all on the journey, especially Rebecca knows, we've had, we started up, had a meeting last week about the CTE. Especially Rebecca knows, we've had, we started, had a meeting last week about the CTE. I'm so excited, you know, my new role as well that I have to support in the journey of placing our students in some amazing jobs. So I'm, I'm excited. So thank you for all your work. Thank you, Karen, for what you do. And I'm looking forward to working with everybody around the table. So I appreciate you.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to also ask the board members, we, you have a list of the membership in each of the work groups. You all have different fields of work that also could be valuable as members. And so I just, Ms. Battle Lockhart, just put it together nicely for me to come back and, and see if there is a, I'd like to request if there's an interest from any board members to serve in one of our committees. We would love to have one of you, any of you in the, in the committees, depending on your time and interest, to go deep and work with these cross-functional work groups because they're having some really, really good conversations. And it might be of interest to the board to have sort of content experts within your group that can talk deeply about this as you're going out to the community. So I just wanted to put it out there for consideration, Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Dr. Navarro. Is there any other business? There's no other business? But I want to say to Dr. Navarro and your staff, I know it's been a long day, a long day. But this is, this is, as Mrs. Battle Lockhart will often say, this is a journey that we're about to embark on, and this is extremely important as part of the public outreach. We collectively, there's a lot that we have to understand. You've alluded to, there's a lot of things that we still, the staff is still trying to figure out. But I think this is first of many conversations and meetings. And we look forward to putting, putting together all of your hard work. So with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. McGraw, seconded by Ms. Brown. All in favor? Motion carries, and thank you again.
Thanks.